I'd like to call to order the November 7th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. In front of you, you will have the minutes from our October 17th meeting. After you've had a chance to review them, if I could get a motion to approve our October 17th minutes. Sherri, second. Brendan. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention. Okay. Moving on to review and approval of the minute -- of the agenda, sorry. In front of you have the agenda for tonight's meeting. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda. Hazel, second. Brendan. All those in favor? Any opposed? None. Okay. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to speak this evening? Seeing none, I will move on to reports and recognition. And we have Mr. Cass here tonight to give us our enrollment and staffing report.
Can I have one late change? A minute?
They were approved.
I know. Just in the last -- just so it's a little bit accurate for posterity. I didn't catch this previously. In item 5.1, in the last sentence, it says, "Once approved by the state, a bid schedule will be published and they hope to start the work in early November." This is for the technology. We're not going to start the work in early November. It would be start the process in early November. So we'll get the bids back and the work will start in early 2016-17.
So can we go back? I think a motion to approve the amended minutes. Okay. Penny Ration, second. Sherri West. All those in favor of approval of the amended minutes? Okay. So we're back on the reports and recognition. Mr. Cass, sorry about that. Thank you.
Not a problem. So thank you all again for allowing the opportunity to present important information about our district staffing and enrollment for this and future years. In order to do this meaningfully, we compile a considerable amount of data from a variety of sources into four reports. It should be noted that all of the reports will be posted on our website tomorrow morning, first thing tomorrow morning. So let me talk a little bit about those reports because this is the time when we take a snapshot of the district in terms of enrollments, all of our students, all of our staff, both certified and non-certified. So we compile these into these four reports that are listed here. So first, the memorandum on enrollment projections analyzes the information and reports provided by our demographer based on past, present, and projected enrollment in the New Canaan public schools. Also included are the demographer's charts and graphs showing New Canaan's historical enrollment and projected enrollment. And again, these are all the snapshot of October 1st, so we can compare it year over year on that same date. The second report is the staff utilization report in TEAL, which is a comprehensive look at our certified staff for the 2016-17 -- our current year, 2016-17. This report includes a summary of enrollment data, staffing data with FTEs at all levels, including section, class size for each grade. We take a look at faculty leadership positions, the administration, and summary totals. It has many uses as a source of information and serves as a standard reference for us throughout the year. We also provide a supplemental analysis report that goes along with that staff utilization and report for certified. And that supplemental analysis report provides additional perspectives on the data in the staff utilization report. There's an FTE comparison from this year with last year at each level and by department. It takes a look at which classes may be under the district guidelines, which are over, and it also takes a look at enrollment in special education programs. There's also a separate staff utilization report, the one in green, and that is a report with all of the data on all of our non-certified staff numbers at each school and department. So those are the reports. Because the data is presented from several different perspectives, including different levels of the school system, specific grades, core and on-core subjects, classes and sections, it's rather voluminous. And my presentation tonight will be guided by these two questions to help frame the presentation. Hopefully by focusing on these two questions, we'll have a clear snapshot of where we were statistically as of October 1st, 2016, and we also may have some sense of where we might be headed in the future. As with any presentation, the data provided in these reports is quite detailed, and our report today provides only an overview of the data. We also compiled all of these reports with the help of many folks. We have principals here tonight to -- without their support, the support of Darlene and her staff, we would have never been able to put all of these reports together. So the support that staff and HR needed was available from all of the administrators in the district. So this is not a one-person presentation. So let's start with a snapshot of the entire district. Over the last six years, we have increased by 114 students. Today, we're at 4,210 students. In the 10-11 school year, 4,096, just kind of over these last six years, an increase of about 114. At 4,210 students, it's an increase of 36 students over last year. The majority of these students came to us at the high school and middle school. We also have 36 students less than the demographer's projection, which, as we all know, is also amazing for its accuracy. Not included in these numbers are the pre-K, which we'll talk about in a minute, which saw a decrease from 43 to 36 students. So now we take a look at another kind of big picture. Total K-12 enrollment, when we add the K-12 enrollment with the pre-K program and the students who are outplaced in our district, you arrive at a total district enrollment of 4,262 students compared to the 4,234, or 28 more than last year's overall total. These numbers, by the way, do not include students attending our launch program where we have five students in attendance. And looking at our school district's historical enrollment, using our pre-K through 12 numbers, 10 years ago, in 2006, we had 4,144. So today, 102 students higher overall, looking at this bigger number. And looking at our school district's historical enrollment, using our pre-K-12 enrollment this year of 4,246, 10 years ago, we were at 4,144, so about 102 students higher. To say it clearly, we're entering a period now, according to our demographer, of sustained, stable enrollment. 10 years from now, the 26-27 school year, we are projected to be at an enrollment of 4,212 students higher than this year, or two students. So now we can take a look at each level. Here's elementary. As I wrote in the memorandum on enrollment projections, our overall projections are quite Our demographer indicated that this was -- some of the changes that were not accounted for was primarily attributed to families moving into New Canaan. This year, our kindergarten came in at 273, 44 under projection, down from 12 from the previous year of 285. Our demographer predicts kindergarten will stay about the same for next year. Overall, elementary decreased by 13 students. Here's a further breakdown by elementary schools. You can see that work done by the board four or five years ago to balance out our three elementary schools still stands up for today. It's worked out extremely well, holds up. These schools are all fairly well-balanced in terms of enrollment. Monitoring the enrollment at this level is important. Currently, we have 29 classrooms. We look at section sizes, 29 sections at East, 28 classrooms or sections at South, and 29 sections at West, including the pre-K. So you can see on each of these that East is about four more than last year, South is about two more, West is down about 19. Saks enrollment had an increase this year, from 1329 to 1361, an increase of 32 students. NASDAQ projects enrollment to dip slightly next year to 1,339, down 22 students. Still, the demographer projects the enrollment of Saks to rise to an all-time high of 1372 students in the 1920 and 2021 school year. Clearly, with rising enrollment projected over the coming years, the additional classroom space coming online next year has certainly come at the right time. New Canaan High School's enrollment peaked at 1348 during the 10-11 school year. This year, it's at 1,268, and is projected to increase next year, according to NASDAQ, by 41 students to 1309. New Canaan High School enrollment will begin a steady climb, anticipated to 1332 during the 21-22 school year, or five years from now, a 64-student increase. Demographers, over the long term, predict a rise at New Canaan High School that peaks in 24-25, at 1,364 students, or about 96 students more than our current enrollment. So slow and steady increase at the high school level. Special education, the student population has increased slightly this year due to a number of move-ins and other factors from last year to today. The prevalence rate this year is at 9.8% this year compared to 9.2% last year. We have a total of 16 out-of-district placements, same as last year. We have more information about our special education program, which can be found in the supplementary analysis of the staff utilization and enrollment report. So now let's kind of switch a little bit to looking at class size and looking at our class size guidelines. In looking at enrollment and class size guidelines, this chart shows that for this year, the percent of classes overall in the district that are at or below board guidelines. And you can see, which is shown on page one of the staff utilization and enrollment report, the class size guidelines for kindergarten through grade three are 16 to 20 students. Shown here is that on the elementary level, the percent of classes meeting the guidelines last year went from 85% to this year, 100% of all classes at the elementary level meeting the guidelines. And the history has been, at the elementary level, 85% last year, 80% the year before, 98 the year before, 88 the year before. So this is a first year in quite some time that every single classroom at the elementary level meets the guidelines. Grades four through eight, the guidelines are 20 to 24 students in -- per class, and Saks typically has a small percentage of classes that are over guidelines, usually about 4.8%, and many sections under the guidelines due to the structure of the team program. This chart shows that Saks Middle School is at 95.3% of the classes are within the class size guidelines. For the high school, nine through 12, the guidelines are 14 to 25 students per class, per section. And this chart shows that the high school, 96.2% of our classes are within the class size guidelines. That's up from last year at 94, the year before about 96, usually hovering between 92 and 96%. So lots of good news there about adhering to our class size guidelines. Now we can switch a little bit to looking at our certified staff. Big picture this year, total certified staff this year, 432.6 FTEs compared to last year, 426.80, an increase of 5.8 FTEs. So -- so as you know, that the breakdown of where those increases came, I want to show you that. You can see that when we compare FTEs at each school, at each level, at the elementary level, East rose about .7 FTEs, South about .4, West dropped .2. At the secondary level, Saks increased 1.0, and the high school about .4. To get to the total 5.8, we also increased in the area of special education to about 1 point -- not about, exactly, 1.5 FTEs. So overall, we did add some staff, including our special ed administrator, some staff at the middle school as well, and some small pieces. It all adds up to about 5.8 FTE. So back to enrollment and looking at the demographer's projections, some predictions for the coming year. The projection of the demographer estimates that the district as a whole will increase in enrollment by five students for next year, from 4,210 to 4,005. Examine my level, they project an increase of 24 students, a decrease of 24 students at the elementary level. The demographer projects a decrease, slight decrease in enrollment of 22 students at Saks, and at the same time, they expect the high school to increase 41 students. So those are the highlights. Should also be noted, the demographer has said to us that the facilities project at Saks Middle School, when completed, may have an impact in increasing the grade five through eight enrollment above the levels which appear in his forecast. Similar facilities improvements in other districts have resulted in fewer students attending non-public schools. At present, there are 51 New Canaan students per grade attending non-public schools in grades five through eight, at the five-through-eight level. So about 51 per grade, so over 200 students. So the demographer points this out to us just so that he knows about the project and he knows it's coming online next year, and he did really not include in his forecast the potential for numbers increasing at Saks Middle School. So just kind of boil it down, according to our demographer, we're entering a period of sustained, stable enrollment. In looking at the projections and the analysis of those projections, it looks like we're on a pretty steady course and fairly stable in terms of where our enrollments will be in the coming years. So just before we go to questions or comments, I'd again like to thank the human resources staff, Lisa Abrams and Lynn Reese, the principals and their staff members, as well as Darlene Pianca, all of her staff, Paul Gallo at New Canaan High School, for verifying all of the information contained in these reports. This review could not have happened without their amazing support. So we are all here today to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Gary. I know it's a Herculean effort to get all of this data put together for the board and the community, so I appreciate everybody's efforts to get it to us. And I also wanted to thank everyone for their work in getting the elementary schools' class sizes within the guidelines. It's the first time I've been on the board that the elementary school class sizes have been within guidelines, so I'm thrilled to see that. I know we've all mentioned that over the years. So I'd like to open it up to questions. And Hazel?
I also echo that thanks. This is a lot of work and such a wonderful thing to hear about the team effort of so many people participating, and it's very helpful for us to understand and to see these figures. Wanted to ask you, just as part of this, we obviously have a number of things happening as far as building and construction in town, and that has been a question that was asked in the newspaper and at meetings, that had we taken into account the concept of merit apartments, for example, and what would be happening with them and any other of the subdivisions that are coming into town. It's hard to keep up with. I didn't know if that was something that we would just be waiting to see how at first it has to pass zoning first, I think, and so we may be a little premature, but it is a question that people are asking.
I did raise that with the demographer. The superintendent and I took a look at what was being considered. We -- I called the demographer, Don Kennedy, you all know Dr. Kennedy, and let him know that here's a project down the road, here are the numbers, here are the number of units they're talking about. He did not include that data as part of these numbers. So what you're seeing here is he didn't -- it wasn't anything that's been approved or it's not down the road enough for him to include it. I did mention it because it was important for him to know as our demographer, but he chose not to change any of the projections as a result of that project.
Could I add just one other part to it as we're looking, of course, the new housing, that's the moderate cost housing that's going in, that's another area I'm sure you're looking at, too.
We did. We discussed all of that with him. He did not change the projections based on those potential building projects.
Thank you.
Sherri?
Gary, I also want to commend you on a very robust and thorough process.
Thank you.
I know I was involved with an early version of the enrollment about six years ago, right, when you were coming in?
Yes.
And you've put all of this in place, and it's just a very thorough analysis and I think so important for us to be able to look at this data. So I just have a quick reconciliation. You talked about the certified staffing and increase of 5.8 FTEs?
Yes.
And I see .9 coming from elementary, 1.5 coming from secondary, and 1.5 coming from special ed. So that adds up to 3.8? I'm just wondering where the other two FTEs are.
The other two positions were adding the language arts leadership position and the additional special ed coordinator. So that gave us the 5.8.
Okay. And then my other question really is directed more toward Darlene, just looking at the special ed prevalence rate right now, around 9.8%. Can you just give us some context around our peer group and the role, the important role that early intervention plays in keeping that rate, the prevalence rate where it is?
Well, early intervention plays a major role, and as you'll notice in the comparative information over the last couple of years, that our identification rate on the elementary level has always been significantly lower, I think, than most of the DURG districts. Our identification rate in general has been somewhere in the midline to lower end of the range. You know, I think that Dr. Corenti and I have a lot of conversation around the importance of early intervention and the response to intervention process and how important a role it plays and the staff that comes along with it in terms of literacy and mathematics and writing skills. And we have clearly been very successful in terms of meeting the needs of our youngest students in those areas, in terms of the interventions that take place prior to the referral. Where we continue to need to focus is on the middle and high school level as the material becomes more complicated and the day and the schedule become more complicated, really looking more deeply at what other prior interventions to special education we could enrich and ensure that our students are in fact getting what they need. We have a wealth of good staff and services available to them currently, so we're really looking at that closely. We are still overall in the lower end of the identification rate in terms of our comparative districts. Last year, when we met in our budget season, I shared all of that information, and as soon as that's available for this year, I will do the quick comparative analysis again so that we're ready to look at that again.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Penny?
I was just wondering, on the private school enrollment, does Dr. Kennedy track that from year to year? Are we typically, for the middle school, is it typically around 51 students? Is that at the higher level now than it generally is?
I'd have to take a closer look at that, but we do track it every year. I have the number of students attending non-public schools by grade level across the board. Private schools reported at different times, which makes it a little more challenging to put your finger on it, but the numbers are fairly consistent year over year.
Yeah, if I'm correct, Gary, those numbers are actually, we're giving the October 1, 2016 number, these are actually a year older, right?
Right.
Because they'll report throughout the year, so we go back, this is the 15-16 school year, when we talk about 50 on the --
That's correct.
-- on the non-public school enrollment. And I, we took a look, and I think it is relatively consistent going back at least two years prior. Anywhere from 40 to 60 students per grade seems to be the norm around those in the middle school grades.
Okay. Thank you. Maria?
Just to add to that, if they predict that less people, less students would go to non-public schools, is the thought they would come to the public schools, and do we have capacity if they did? Or what would be the capacity?
Well, that's a great question. So the question is, would they be coming here? Dr. Kennedy pointed that out only because he has seen that there has been a percentage Dr. Kennedy pointed that out only because he has seen that there has been a percentage, and it varies by district. So he writes it to keep us aware. So even though the projections say for next year, Saks is down slightly twenty students, we shouldn't be surprised if, you know, they came through with the exact same numbers next year. So he wanted us to be aware of that, that building projects have a way of drawing residents back to the public school that have been attending private.
Any other questions?
Just, in terms of the number of houses on the market in New Canaan, is there any information or conclusions that Dr. Kennedy draws from that or inferences about what might happen with respect to enrollment?
He did include in his report all of the current houses on the market. He compared the numbers from last year to this year. He took all that into consideration. He says that all falls within our kind of move-in numbers, as generally, it's so difficult to project, to project kindergarten numbers. You know, that's kind of been the bigger challenge. And you remember from two years ago, we had a slew of move-ins at the kindergarten level, and it was, it was all because of people moving into the district. So he factors in that information in coming up with, with the numbers.
And what is he using now as a move-in number for the kindergarten? How many students, is he generally adding now to the births?
One of the charts that I included was on the last page of the memorandum, and where he compares birth, the birth-to-kindergarten relationship. So he says the gap between the birth rate and the kindergarten enrollment are move-ins. So from one data point to the next, that's what he calculates as the, as the, as the move-in.
Yeah, I'm not-
So I think that the, the number that he's looking at is around one-point-four, if I'm correct.
Is the multiplier?
Is the multiplier on the births. This last year, we did come in under the kindergarten.
Yes.
And I think he had gone, he had moved that number up a bit to be more like a one-six-five, and it was, it overshot it a bit on this year. So he's brought it back down to about a one-four, if I'm correct.
Right.
I don't have it right in front of me, but I think that's-
Right, I was, I think it's the last sheet here, but I couldn't-
Doesn't have the ratio, though.
Right.
Right. And I think that that's, which really, I mean, so he's really moved a little bit more conservatively in the kindergarten, which is something we have to keep an eye on as well. You know, because we also know if we look back, if you look at the historical enrollments, we tend to be in a pattern, a bit of a larger class and a smaller class, and a larger class and a smaller class. So this kindergarten we just brought in this year would likely classify as a smaller class historically, so if our numbers do go up a little bit in kindergarten next year, we just, we'll need to keep a close eye on that, because it could happen, given those, you know, those patterns as we go. So we'll keep an eye.
Other questions?
I just had one quick question. So when you were working with Dr. Kennedy, did you get a sense for how our enrollment is looking, our growth in enrollment or stasis in enrollment, compared to our surrounding districts and the state in general?
Well, he doesn't talk to me about the surrounding districts. He, I did ask him, and he quickly reminded me that I should call my colleagues in those neighboring districts. But I will tell you, and Brian has lots of this information as well about our neighboring districts, lots of school districts are experiencing downward trend in terms of, in terms of enrollment.
And I had the good fortune of being at a superintendent's meeting not too long ago, we talked about enrollment. And while they are, they're seeing a downward trend, many of them came in higher than their projections this year. So if they had projected that they would go down a certain amount, they did go down a bit, but not as many as that, as the projections said they would. So we're actually calling a meeting with a demographer, being some of the surrounding towns, Wilton, Westport, Greenwich, Weston, some others. We're going to meet with them and talk to them about macro trends, you know. So we've all agreed to share our data, and we'll look to see, are we starting to see more of a widespread recovery in the entire area, given that so many of these districts came in better than their projections had been as far as the total numbers go? So if we're starting to see this turnaround, we're going to be having that conversation with, you know, with the demographer and with other, other superintendents, just to get a sense of that. I don't know if that's the case. The, I do, I think our enrollment projections here seem to be conservative, but I think that's a good place for us to be, you know, given our trends. But we want to see, I'm interested to see if, if there's a wider spread recovery than, and the numbers are starting to go up in the surrounding towns, then I think we would see that as well, you know, more here. So it'll be a good conversation, I'll be glad to let you know how it goes and what we can learn. Also, just to share, because, and Gary, again, thank you for all the detail, and it really is a team effort. I know that your group and Darlene's and Joanne's, all the, everyone across central offices have been working on this for a long time. Because these documents now, you know, this sort of brings them out, but now we'll use these for budget, as we talk about our staffing, our FTEs, and, you know, everything, everything ties together to these, you know, these staff utilization reports and these documents. So everybody really worked hard together, and thank you for, Joanne, both for shepherding that. The, we talk about, for instance, Saks going down a little bit next year. You know, that really, that is, there's one factor involved with that primarily, which is the largest class in the district, which is the eighth grade, is moving into the high school, right? So as that moves up, and then the fourth grade that's coming to the fifth grade is still a large class, but not, not as large as that eighth grade, which is almost three-hundred-and-eighty students. That's where we see those fluctuations. So it's not that people are leaving, it's not that, you know, there's an out migration, it's really just as the classes move up through the schools. The, the challenge for any demographer, as we know, the two toughest things to gauge are the kindergarten enrollments, because of that ratio to births and what it means, and then what they call in-migration. And he's still trying to get a handle on sort of what the in-migration looks like at each of the grades. And those are people who move into town, who already have students in the schools, you know, of school age, and then they, they move in and the students enroll in first, second, third grade, or they come out of a private school environment or a non-public environment and come in. And I think that was, again, if I recall Dr. Kennedy's conversation with us, as when Saks comes online, he would anticipate there could be some more in-migration into the district based upon that. So that's, he tries to fact, do the best he can to factor all those things in. But the, the variation when we go from school to school is really just about the size of the classes as they move up through the schools.
You know, I had one more question, and it may, it kind of takes it to the next step with, we talked about the number of sections and the elementary schools, so what is it? East has twenty-nine sections, and South has twenty-eight?
Yes.
And West has twenty-nine?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. So with the enrollment that we are seeing right now and the number of sections, how are our buildings doing as far as classroom spaces and things like that with the enrollment that we have? I mean, are we?
Our, our buildings are designed, and our programs within the buildings are designed, and we have three experts right here, really to function best with twenty-nine sections or twenty-nine classes in them, right? We have, that allows us to run our full program. Over at West, it's a little different, because we have three of the rooms are put, are part of the preschool, so that's twenty-six, and the three for twenty-nine. But given our enrollment today, and if these projections hold true going into the future, I think we continue to run our full program as we have it now with the twenty-nine sections at each of the locations, or, you know, or twenty-eight, twenty-seven as we go. So that, that's ideal. If we go into a thirtieth section, thirty-first, then we do have some other decisions to make, which we've discussed, and it has to do with classroom space and how best to, to make it all work. But we've done it in the past, we've made some adjustments when we've had to, when we've had larger classes come through, so it's not unprecedented. But I, the ideal number is twenty-nine, and that's, we're at twenty-nine or below, so we're in good shape.
So if we were to kind of look back in history, you know, have, how often have we had the twenty-nine? Have we been, what's the lowest we've been in sections, looking back maybe five years, ten years, or, you know, I don't know how, how long that data stays in your head fresh, but.
Joanne, you've had some fluctuation, have you not, with having to even use a different classroom, and you've been over twenty-nine, correct?
I think the lowest that we've been is either twenty-seven or twenty-six, and thirty sections was probably about six or seven years ago.
Yep. And in that case, it was about one of the, the science classroom, I would believe, but it also does impact specials and rotations and other staff and schedules in various different ways because of the, you know, the way that it's all structured. So it has a bit of a trickle effect, but we've done it, and we will again if we have to.
Not ideal, but we can make it work.
Exactly.
But we're, it, based on these numbers, it looks like our buildings, our elementary schools are pretty full, and, and, you know, there's not a lot of extra space in these for extra classrooms. So.
Hazel?
Speaking of classrooms, that brings to my mind an article I was reading in Education Week about teachers, because we certainly are keeping a healthy number of children that are coming in. And evidently, there's research coming out of Stanford that's saying in 2018, there'll be something like, we'll be country-wise, United States-wise, down about a hundred-thousand teachers because of, and I know that you have done an outstanding job with your office and people and everybody, bringing in wonderful teachers to work with our students. Is there anything we need to be thinking about, speaking of the budget, to keep that in mind, that, is that something that's going to affect us? I think people like coming to New Canaan to teach, it's a wonderful place, but it is a high cost of living, and so how do we help teachers to come here? I guess can be a future discussion. I just, I guess raising it because mentioning about the classrooms, we do need the teachers to be at the front of the classrooms, too.
You know, I've read that same research, and there's going to be a teacher shortage, there's no doubt.
Yes.
We are experiencing some of that. For example, we needed, we needed a Latin teacher this year. There are no Latin teachers. We were very fortunate to find a recent college graduate certified in Latin that kind of came through and is, is doing a wonderful job, a year one. Very hard to fill world language openings, lots of shortages for special education, the sciences, mathematics. So the whole state of Connecticut is experiencing shortages in, in many areas. So that, that's here, that's now. Fortunately, we have people that like to come to our district, we're out there recruiting, we start really early to try to identify our openings and potential staff, so that's something that we really have to be mindful of as we move forward.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it. All right. All right, moving on to the action item section of our agenda. The first item in that section is the All Sports Booster Club donation, and I'm going to allow Dr. Lutze to give us a little background before we move to a vote.
Glad to do so.
Sorry.
No, no, don't be, just shuffling lots of papers.
Yeah.
It'll be nice when we go digital. Yes, so this donation, another generous donation from the All Sports Booster Club, this time in the amount of forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents. And similar to the others, the donation is to fund the coaches, supplementary coaches or the coaches that are not provided for in our budget, that enable us to run the programs at both the, the quality that we do and with the enrollment that we have. As you know, our budget certainly covers what we need to run the program, but the All Sports Booster Club's donations allow us to increase participation, allow us to do things within our program that adds value to the experience for our students. I know that when putting this together, Mr. Egan, our athletic director, works very closely with, with his staff to be sure that there's an equitable distribution. He, we do go through the breakdown as far as the sports go, male and female, around Title IX and those things, and he's very careful around all of that. So this is the amount for the, just the fall coaches, which, and fall is a big season, there are many students who participate in the fall and different athletic event teams that we have. But there would be one also in the winter that'll come in a few months, and in the spring after that. So this, this makes a big difference in our program. I think we're, we're very, very lucky to have such a generous group of people who help us to add this value to the experience for our kids. It allows us to do more individualized coaching, programming, and I think we, I know we see the results in the outcome of our, our team's success every year.
Okay. So if I could get a motion to approve a donation from the New Canaan All Sports Booster Club in the amount of forty-one thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-six cents for the purpose of fall coaching positions? Hazel? So moved with a big thank you. Second, Brendan. Any questions? Any comments or questions?
Just, because I've been asked about this a couple of times by various people, could you go into, in a little more detail into what the Title IX analysis is? I mean, we know exactly which coaching positions these are, there's nothing, it's, it's all very transparent.
It is, we began this, as you remember-
If you could just explain that.
Yeah, I'm glad to, thank you, Penny. If you, you'll recall probably a year and a half ago or so, we began accepting the donations in in order to pay these coaching positions. They were called volunteer coaches, but they were being paid by the All Sports Booster Club. And so we, the Board of Ed decided, I think wisely, to accept these donations in and then disperse them to these coaches, instead of having the money go directly from the All Sports Booster Club to the, to the coaches. This, it does a number of things. It puts them on the same schedule as far as the amount that each coach receives, so that it's tie, it's, it's aligned with what the other coaches are receiving. It also gives us the ability to take a look and to be sure that there's an equitable distribution between the sports. If we look at girl's sports and, and boy's sports at different activities, we want to be sure that there is a relatively equal contribution towards the two for Title IX. We also want to make sure that even across sports, you know, if we're looking at field hockey and soccer and, you know, other sports, that there, we're meeting those needs for the students. Of course, it's driven, the number of coaches you need for a sport are driven by a number of factors, including the, if it's a contact sport or not, the number of students who participate, the practices and those things. But in all, with all of those factors taken into consideration, there's great care to be sure that there is an equal balance between, with these donations and other things, because it's, you know, Title IX operates by looking at not just budget money that's spent in the program, but any money that's spent in your program, it looks to see that there's, that is equitably distributed between the boys and girls in different sports. So even though it's not budget money, even though it's donated to us, we are still responsible to make sure that it's, it conforms to the expectations around Title IX. And we do that each time. And Gary is our Title IX expert.
I wasn't going to talk about Title IX, but I think the most important reason to bring them under the Board of Education umbrella is that these coaches are now, every single one of them is vetted through the Human Resources Department. This was not the case. So we did not, we now have coaches that we do full background checks. So all of that, for me, from where I sit, critically important, that any employee who works with our children has been completely vetted through, through our department. And we have a very extensive system for conducting background checks that we put into place two years ago, and, and now we know, now we know who's working with our kids.
And just in that vein, Gary, the same goes with our co-curricular advisors and those that work with the plays and drama and all of those. Gary's office has, in the last couple of years, taken all of that under its umbrella to run those checks and to have people, make sure that anyone who's working with our students on the field or on the stage or anywhere else is appropriately vetted. It's important.
Sheri?
So can I just extend Penny's question, though, because I have also been asked. So the All Sports Boosters Club is a separate 501(c)(3) nonprofit, but when you say it's under the umbrella of the Board of Ed, so you just described the HR processes, which is very helpful. Can you also describe, like, the fiduciary process and the financial review? Because I've also been asked that question.
Of the type, of the way the money's spent?
And just what our role is in the fiduciary and the financial review? And, and we talk about transparency, but if there are stakeholders or parents who want to see the financial statements of the All Sports Boosters, are they able to do so?
Well, so this money comes to the Board of Education as a donation from the All Sports Booster Club. The, they run their financials and do their, what they're going to do with those. However, when the money comes- However, when the money comes into the Board of Education, into our program, that's where, you know, the Board of Education's responsibility picks up. They could, as a 501(c)(3), they could spend their money on other things that, not related to the Board of Education, if it fell within their bylaws and their roles to do so, that we wouldn't have, the board wouldn't have responsibility over that spending. The responsibility is because it's coming into our programs, and so the, it becomes our responsibility to be sure that it's distributed in the appropriate ways. If, I do believe, I mean, the All Sports Booster Club is a great partner for us, and I know that they are always looking for people to join them, to attend the meetings, to be a part of those dialogues and those discussions, so I know that it's very, it would be very open and transparent, I would imagine. However, they're not responsible to, say, the Board of Education to show us, you know, their books or that information, because that's, they're their own organization. However, any donations that come into the Board of Education and by policy and other things, it's really, the distribution of that becomes the responsibility of the board. So there is a separation there. And just if any group, if a PTC or PFA were to donate into the school, and it's, there's a good reason for it, right? Because there are, I've seen happen before where groups want to give targeted donations that benefit a few students, but not, not to the greater good. And in those instances, I've not seen that here, but in those instances, the Board of Education needs to be in a position where it can decide where that money goes and how it's distributed so that you, that doesn't happen. For when computers started getting big in classrooms, there were people who might have had either the financial wherewithal or otherwise, that they wanted to give their child's classroom, you know, 24 laptops. But you can't, we couldn't do that because that would set up an inequity between that classroom and the other classrooms in the building. So that's where the Board of Education, again, that's not an example from New Canaan, but just an example of how it works. So any, the donations that come into the district are really without strings attached, right? And then it's the Board of Education who can, who distributes those. Now, on behalf of the Board, Jay works very hard, and I help him, and we do other things to be sure that when this money comes in, that it is equitably distributed. So as we go into the coaches, we look at that, we break it down, and we, you know, we make sure that if, you know, 20,000 is going into boy's sports, 20,000's going into girl's sports, and there's a balance. Is it up and down, $500 or so based on, yeah, it's not going to be to the penny, but it doesn't have to be. You know, it has to be a good faith effort to make them equitable, and we do that. Yeah.
Great, helpful, thank you.
And just, I guess, to tag on to that, it's sort of up to, I guess, the people who are donating to the All Sports Booster Club to make the decision as if there's enough transparency in sort of their financial processes that they want to make a donation or not. We're just the, you know, unfortunate beneficiaries of the work that they do. So I think that's probably the best way to look at it. Any other questions before?
No, I'd just like to say thank you again to the All Sports Booster Club. I mean, I think this is incredibly generous, and by asking all the questions, we're not meaning to cast out on it at all, but really just to state that it's all being put to good and fair use in the school district. And so we very much appreciate that. I guess at some point, I don't know if it's possible, but since it was today, where we get this great staff utilization report about teachers, I mean, I've never seen a similar report, and it'd just be interesting if, I have no idea how much effort it would be to put together on the athletics and all the different coaches and the different physicians and all that, to get some sort of an idea as a board about what it actually, not, I'm not talking just about the All Sports Booster donations, but really what we fund ourselves. We get a great breakdown about teachers in the classrooms, and I don't think I've, maybe it's there, Gary, and I've missed it, but if that's so.
No, about two years ago.
I think it would be interesting to see the same sort of data about the athletic.
Yeah, about two years ago, Jay Egan did a presentation similar to that, and I'd be happy to ask him to revise, you know, update it with new numbers and bring them in. He talked about the different funding streams into athletics and talked about the All Sports Booster and the budget and other ways, that it all comes together, and, you know, the numbers of coaches funded in different ways. So I'd be glad to talk to him. We can pull that together.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, then if we could, we have a motion on the table to approve the donation, so all those in favor? Any, that's unanimous? Okay. Moving on, the next item on our action items is the Visual and Performing Arts donation. And again, I'll have Dr. Lutze give us a little background.
Again, very glad to do it. Another generous donation, and this one has a bit of an interesting story to it also. Anna Moody has been running our music tech program for a number of years, and really started out as a fledgling program. Now they're running over, what, 10 sections per semester, and we've got other teachers that are teaching it. We're doing a version over at the middle school. It's really a great program. So over the summer, she was looking, doing some research about sort of how to continue to evolve the program, and came across this product from Ableton called The Push. And The Push is a, it's a music sequencer, it's a digital audio workstation. They talk about, you can use it to mix music and to make different sounds and what have you. So she posted on a Facebook page asking people if they've used it or have any experience with it, if they think it would work well. And the company actually saw her post about her interest, and so they came to her, looked at our website, they went to SoundCloud, listened to some of the work we've done, and reached out and said that they're looking to get into the educational market, and what they'd like to do is donate for us 25 site licenses of the software and eight of the actual devices themselves, that each cost about $750, for us to pilot for them and to test it out and to use it with our kids. And all they're asking in return is feedback from Anna as far as how it goes, and is it working well, and things to help them improve their product. So she was thrilled, and she contacted them, they went back and forth, and so now we have this generous donation of, and the exact amount's on the agenda here, $7,184 worth of software and equipment for our students to use in our music tech lab. And again, it's sort of, now, we've used Macs there, we've used, you know, the iMusic app and other things, and they've done amazing work. This gives them another very sophisticated tool to use in their mixing and their composing of music. So we're very, we're thrilled. So, you know, if you know Anna, you're not too surprised that she's able to pull something like this together, but it's good news, and I think that it'll be exciting to see what our students are putting together with this as the, as the year goes through.
Okay. So we'll make a popular course even more popular.
We hope so.
So do we have, I guess, I would like to get a motion to approve a donation from Ableton, Inc. of Hardware and Software totaling $7,184 for use in the New Canaan High School Music Technology Program. Sherry, second. Brendan, any discussion or questions or comments? Maria?
When would that start? Would it affect, is it a full-year music class, and is, or is it a?
The classes are semesterized typically, but there are progressions as well, so Music Tech 1, 2, and 3. But we would be getting the equipment in very soon, and we'd start right away. So we would start before the end of the calendar year, I would imagine, as far, it's just a matter of getting the equipment here and getting it going.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Hazel?
I just have one compliment. Not one, there've been several tonight, but to add to the compliments that we were fortunate as a board to be able to tour the technology programs in the high school, the middle school, and the elementary in the fall. And one of the programs that we visited was the program that uses, will be using this, and it was an exciting program to see, and I can only imagine what's going to happen after this is added to the repertoire.
We have a motion on the floor? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to comments from the public. Does anyone like to speak? I seeing none, we'll move on to, if I could get a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 1-210B9 for the purpose of discussion of records, reports, and statement of strategy or negotiation with respect to collective bargaining. I have a motion. Hazel?
So move.
Second.
Second, sorry, second.
Yeah. Okay, Sherry, second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, we are adjourned to executive session.